Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, to order. Can I have a roll call, please, Mrs. Larson?
Yes. Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Gamble?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. And the meeting has been properly posted. I'd like to invite our Eagle Scout, Sean Dornacker, to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For item three, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Sir.
Mr. Gamble, second by Mr. Gamble. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For item four, we have community comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make community comment this evening? Anyone who would like to make community comment? Hearing none, then we'll move on to item five, school board announcements. Do we have any announcements by board members? Any announcements? Alright, then we'll move on to item six, school board calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, January 29th, 2020, here at the Education and Community Center at 6 o'clock PM. And we have a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, February 12th, 2020, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM. For item seven, we have reports, presentations, and other school board business. Our first presentation is our Eagle Scout recognition. And I'd like to invite Mr. Nielsen and myself to the front. And I'd also like to invite Sean Dornacker back up to the front of the room. And first, Mr. Nielsen will read a letter on behalf of the board.
Sean, the Board of Education would like to commend you for working to achieve the highest rank in Boy Scouts, Eagle Scout. As part of your path and in support of a better community, you chose a project to help Franklin residents properly retire American flags in a dignified way by constructing three American flag retirement collection boxes. You also coordinated with the Franklin Police and Fire Departments to place the boxes at their locations. Your struggle with finding American flags and appropriately discarded by citizens resulted in a project that not only honors our American flag, our veterans, and all who serve, but also educates our community. Our school community appreciates your ability to set goals, show commitment, and complete the challenge. You are a model for your peers in our establishing a good foundation for future leadership. You have demonstrated that you can make a positive difference in our community. Sean also played trumpet for all four years at the high school, was part of a very successful marching band program, and I understand he's attending Whitewater next year, which is my alma mater. We wish you continued success with your academic studies on your path in scouting. Congratulations.
And I'd also like to invite your parents to come up. And then I'd like to present this award to you. So I don't know if you'd like to say anything about your parents or if your parents would like to say anything? And then we're gonna sit down after, go get a picture of all of us together with your parents.
So is there anything you want me to talk about?
Well, before we sit down and you present your project to the board and the community, I don't know if you want to talk about your dad being your troop or the support of your parents?
Yeah. Alright, so basically, when you do an Eagle project, like a lot of people give a lot of the Eagle Scout the credit. And like, I'm not gonna say that that isn't well deserved because of my problem. But a lot of it comes with huge support from our community and their parents. Like, my mom and my dad helped me, like, in ways that I can't even imagine throughout my scouting career. And like, it's just sort of like anything else that you do, sports or a job, it requires a huge time commitment. And not only did I take that, but my dad took that with me. He's been in scouts with me as long as I have and probably has done equal to, if not more, work to help my troop overall as their scout master. And like, I can't imagine like a better role model than my father. And they've helped a lot. And my mom, like, she's always been a huge role model for me. Like, she's always the one on top of things at home. Like, my dad's a little bit more laid back. You gotta go, gotta go and do this, gotta go and do that. But that's not quite a bad thing at all. It keeps me motivated and keeps me focused on goals, which is why I was able to complete my project. And then, I'd say like, thank you to my troop who's like here right now and like my entire troop in general, like, they decided to show up and support me, and that means like a lot of you. So, thank you guys.
That's great, thank you.
Sure.
Cool. Alright, so basically, I'll start over here and pass this down. For my Eagle project, there's a lot of things that you have to do in order to complete it. It's much like what you guys would know, like passing a motion through something or like getting a new bell for a school district. It requires a lot more work than simply just saying, "I want this done," and then getting it done. So, to start off, I had to brainstorm an idea and contact people to see like what they thought about it or who would want my project to actually happen. I talked to a lot of veteran organizations, found out that although they are given like old mailboxes usually that are donated to them, they tend to rust within like usually two or three years because they are metal and they are old already, but when they're given. So, I came up with the idea to build a flag retirement box that couldn't rust. So, what I did was I went online and I researched different like materials that I could use. And I decided on a PVC paneling. It's usually used for roofings on houses, but I decided to use it to cut and create a box that would not rust due to wetness, cold, anything like that. And I, my entire project's based around that. My boxes should last for around 22, 25 years if like the details stay on. And all that's the details limit. The boxes shouldn't rust at all. The nails are all stainless steel, hinges stainless steel. Everything's like completely like waterproof, pretty much. So, yeah, it was just a idea. Because I wanted to help veterans from the beginning of my project. I just didn't know what to do. So, I thought about doing something unique, and that's when I came to my project idea. And from there, that's when all the long and tedious work began. As you'll see passing the notebook around, I have a lot of pictures, but the first like at least 40 pages of that are paperwork. With your Eagle project comes a mountain of paperwork that you have to fill out and have completely thorough. It's reviewed by your troop, your scout master, and a board, and a like committee board here in Wisconsin that reviews your Eagle, and then it is sent to the National Board to be reviewed and accepted. So, it comes with a lot of work that you have to like fill out and do. And it has to be very thorough down to the like exact pricing for each bit of material I use, every measurement that I have. Much like building a house, you have to have everything like completely checked off by somebody before you complete it. And then, from there, after I turned in my book, I go through a, what I, it's called a board of review. It'd be sort of like a, like somebody reviewing you for a promotion. You basically go in front of a group of people and they talk about your entire scout career and why you think you deserve it, like getting this rank. And then you explain your life and what your goals are. For me, one of my deep goals was to continue to support scouting, so that's what I try to do. And, yeah. If anyone has any questions, it is like they can like ask me. Yeah, after that, you get a lot of, like after you're approved, you go through a huge like ceremony. I had a ceremony, I think it was November 30th. The dates are getting bunched up in my head. But basically, you're presented with all your awards. Thanks to my troop and my parents, they sent requests to the senators and like the senators and congressmen that represent our community in Wisconsin. And they got, like, I've got letters of recognition from the Congress of the United States. I've gotten the flag. It's not with me, it's at my house right now, but I got a flag flown over to my house over me. And then that was packaged up and sent to me by Hunter Johnson. But like, as, if you ask any Eagle Scout, not just me, they'll, they'll just start to ramble on because it's a lot of, it's a lot of emotions and a lot of work to sort of put into simple. So, yeah.
Looks like you're keeping track of a timesheet?
Yeah.
What was, what was that about?
My timesheet is, because I can't work on the project alone, that's an Eagle Scout requirement. You're not supposed to work on your project yourself because the whole point of the Eagle Scout project isn't to show that you know how to do something by that point. It's naturally assumed that you could easily do it. It's to show that you have the leadership to motivate and get other people to help you. So, that timesheet is everybody who worked on my project, whether they were scouts, non-scouts, they all had to sign the timesheet, and then I had to add up all their hours cumulative. And that was the total amount of hours I spent on my project. I think my hours were somewhere in the 300s or the amount of time that I've spent on this. It took me about six months of planning and completion in order to get it all done. And everything in your project has to be done by your eighteen-year-old. So, like towards the end there, I was a little bit on time pressure. So, that added to the stress a little bit, but...
That's the first I heard of that. I never knew about the getting other people involved part of it. I thought it was a project that the Eagle Scouts did, and that's an interesting twist.
Yeah, if you, any Eagle Scout project that you see always has other scouts working on it. It's, as an Eagle Scout, you're supposed to be able to lead the people instead of you doing it yourself because as I learned, it's very easy to do a project yourself because you know what you want. It's a lot harder to motivate people to get them to do what you want. And an ironic choice that I found actually working on this project is a lot of people think that it's more difficult to lead like children to get you to do something because it's not too easily. For me, it was convincing the adults to do what I wanted. Because like, I'm, I was raised by my parents to be respectful to pretty much everyone. And like, me being me, like if you've ever tried to like tell somebody who's older than you and like probably definitely knows more than you that you want to do something your way and that's the way it's gonna be done, it's really, it's unnerving at first. It feels like you shouldn't be saying this, but in the end, you have to realize that it is your project. That sort of does like mainstream all I went through with it is so many people had so many ideas and they were all trying to help me. And it was sort of finding my own idea and all their ideas so I could have what I wanted in the end and I could be proud of instead of something that they wanted to make.
Well, that never changes, Sean.
That's true. They turn out really good.
So, thank you for coming and presenting your project to us. And what do you want to major in?
I'm going to Whitewater to double major in psychology and criminality. I hope to work for the FBI as a, either a detective or a psychologist.
That's great. Well, good luck to you, and we'll keep passing that down. And thank you for coming, and good luck.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Alright, item seven B is another presentation. We have our Forest Park Middle School presentation with Ms. King.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Not that there wasn't. Alright, and we all presented and projected. As they're organizing themselves. So, Mr. Miziac and Ms. O'Gallagher are also here, back there, organizing and arranging. So, you're gonna hear very little from me and lots from our kiddos. We wanted to really highlight our new experiences that we're having in the building. So, as you remember, those are some screenshots from when we were here, I think, November of 2018, proposing a lot of new courses and experiences for our students. So, what that means is we have a lot of new sixth grade courses, a lot of new eighth grade courses. Because a lot of eighth grade courses went to seventh grade, you guys remember that whole thing. So, there was lots that we could have highlighted. We reached out to just a small number of kids within our building and asked them to come and highlight some of the experiences that they're having. So, I'm gonna sit here with them as they kind of come over here and tell you all about what's going on at Forest Park.
Hi, my name is Leah Purra, and I'm an eighth grade student at Forest Park Middle School. Today, I would like to talk about service learning, which is currently one of the core classes I have chosen to take this semester. In an overview, this class combines learning objectives such as community and outreach with service projects that contribute to the day-to-day upkeep and help needed throughout our community. So far this year, we have done many projects, which include our Veteran's Day Breakfast and advocacy research project, Operation Gratitude, internships, trips and pen pals with Autumn Leaves, memory care facility here in Franklin, fundraisers, and general help throughout our school. One of my most favorite projects we did was the Veteran's Day Breakfast, where we raised over $900 in fundraising and many donations to put on an event in only three months. What was also inspiring to see was how so many students came together and worked on all areas of the project to create a commemoration, which is the first of its kind in our district. I like this class not only for its ingenuity, but for the many things it has to teach students like me. It shows students how to take action, work together, time management, and how to contribute to many causes representing all areas of service. So far, I have learned the areas of service, which are direct, indirect, research, and advocacy, as well as how to follow the steps in an action plan when doing a project like many we have completed so far this year. One other idea I can take in further from this course is the fact of trying and failing until you have accomplished your goal. In service learning, I have seen firsthand what trying and failing is with some of our projects. One being a raffle fundraiser where we only made $13 from the 13 people that signed up. However, even though we did only make $13, our next fundraiser, Penny Wars, will lead into us making over $900, which exceeded the cost needed greatly. Overall, I love service learning as a class, and I hope many students take to, choose to take it many more years to come. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Milbeck, and I have been taking a personal finance class this year. Before class began, I thought it was gonna be boring, but it ended up being very interesting, and I've been able to take a lot from it. I have learned about different ways to invest my money, such as stocks, real estate, money market, CDs, and savings accounts. We pretended to invest in three stocks, and some people were able to make a lot of money while others lost a lot. I only made a little bit because my Amazon stock lost a lot of money, and it showed how important it is to carefully invest your money because many people would have lost some money and would have been in trouble. It helps a lot to know more about the risks of investing our money and tips on how to manage it. In my opinion, my favorite and most helpful project we did was creating a realistic budget for what life would look like after we graduated from college. I budgeted for expenses such as car loans, student loans, house or rent payments, taxes, groceries, social security and Medicare, utilities, personal expenses, hobbies, and entertainment. It was very eye-opening for me to see how much things like utilities were. I had chosen a career as a computer animator, which had only made a $36,000 salary. And even though I was able to pay for all my expenses each month, I had to be strategic with my money left over because I had very little for personal use, like eating out or going out with friends. It also made us think carefully about the difference between needing what. We needed a place to live, but we had to make sure to find a place that suited us for only what we needed so we didn't run out of money. Most people had to buy cheap old cars because that's all we could afford. This activity really showed me and my classmates how important saving a budgeting is because your money can disappear very quickly. This class provided us with a lot of lessons that are very applicable to our personal lives.
So, my name is Joseph Horrible. I am an eighth grader, and I'm going to be talking about automation and robotics. So, automation and robotics is a very quick two, one semester, little, I don't really want to say class because we usually take up the entire class building, the robots. But it's fun because it makes it feel like you're the one who's in charge of building the robots since our teacher kind of just lets us do what we want to do with the robots, besides actually building them. And when it comes up to my favorite projects, I would have to say it's the Clawbot in the Fright Elevator. A bot is about picking up things, that's it. But it's very interesting because of the amount of wires on it. And the wires are all hooked up to one big box that basically commands the entire robot. And when it comes up to the Clawbot, it can do very small jobs. And in the future, this Clawbot could possibly become like a large, larger robot that could pick up bigger things. And when it comes up to the Fright Elevator, the Fright Elevator was probably my favorite project out of the two because whenever it would get to a certain floor, it would randomly beep and scare the mess out of everyone there. And basically, you would press a button that was on the side, and according to what button you replaced, it would go to the corresponding floor and then stop. And a little light on the side would go up. And after we built the Fright Elevator, we were slowly taking it apart, and we end up building another elevator of it, but taller. That was a fun experience. But really, when it comes up to robotics, I would say the best part about it is that there's really no restrictions to what your imagination could take you with this.
Hi, my name is Abby Hall, and I'm an eighth grader. I'll be talking about Team Cuisine, Team Cuisine. Team Cuisine is a class where we cook and work learning things all related to safety in the kitchen. Some of our units have been pasta, knife skills, quick breads, and breakfast spices, which taught us how to use knives safely. And then other units are making food at home independently. I have tried many of these recipes, and they have made my cooking skills better. I have lot, I have learned lots in Team Cuisine, such as food poisoning is very common. Can happen from food sitting out too long. So, beware at family functions when food tends to set out too long. Food poisoning can also happen if the food is not cooked for the right amount of time. We also learned a lot about how to keep food safe from germs. My favorite part of the class is definitely the pasta unit, but I enjoyed any class period where we get to cook and eat it.
My name is Nora, and this is...
Aya. Aya.
Do you like school, Aya?
Y-yes.
We are going to be talking about the highlights of our literacy class. We really enjoy collaborating in groups.
Writing. Writing.
In our writing class, one of our biggest achievements was finishing our theme essays. We first drafted three different theme essays so we would really understand. We really enjoyed collaborating with those who shared a similar theme and story. Aya, who do you like working with?
I like Nora. I like Nora. I like Ryan. I like Ryan. Social studies. Social studies.
One of our favorite parts of social studies was teaching our peers about a culture we learned about. We learned how many different things impact culture, including geography. What country did you learn about, Aya?
Canada. Canada. I see mountains. I see mountains. I see lakes. I see lakes. Reading. Reading.
We also really enjoy our book club unit because it allows us to work in groups and share ideas. We like working with our friends.
I like friends. I like friends. I like Nora. I like Nora. I like Kate. I like Kate.
We really enjoy our literacy class, but it wouldn't be the same without our amazing teachers. Both Mrs. Mann and Mrs. Feller are always there for us when we need the help.
I like teachers. I like teachers. I like Mrs. Mann. I like Mrs. Mann. I like Mrs. Feller. I like Mrs. Feller.
Our learning wouldn't be the same without all the fun activities and all the collaborating we do.
Goodbye. Goodbye.
Hi. My name's Anish Kenedy, and I am from Forest Park Middle School. I am in sixth grade, and I'm very excited to be here. What I am gonna talk about today is a class in middle school called TechEd. TechEd is a great baseline course that will help students gather experience in the engineering classes, where all students would be able to make and talk about designs and learn about the engineering possibilities they could have in their life. In my own perspective, Forest Park Middle School gives all the kids a fantastic way to learn about engineering. This middle school, this middle school gives the rooms that have a lot of expensive gear. Also, the teachers are very nice and are happy to help whenever. This year, I have made a few things in TechEd. I have made a name plaque. I have made a key holder. And I am currently working on a puzzle cube, which I don't have right now. In my opinion, this helps, this class helps kids like me with the next grade levels and will help me think in different ways. I am very happy to have this opportunity to have a great school and have an awesome experience at TechEd, when I would normally do it next year in seventh grade. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Adith Vaganathan, a sixth grader at Forest Park Middle School. The new middle school has been really awesome. In our sixth grade art class, we get to do many different projects like color real cities, clay bowls, ornaments, a photography unit, and mandalas. We made two clay bowls. Students get to keep one and the other bowls donated to the Feeding Franklin event. The money raised out of selling the bowls goes to the Hunger Task Force. The next thing that our sixth grade did is the photography unit. We used an animal out of plastic and took, and took a picture of it in the environment. Then we, we then edited it, edited it in way, in, and in with the help of Photoshop to look like a real one. Right now, I'm making a mandala. Mandala, the word literally means circle. In this unit, we draw a circle. In this unit, we draw a circle and fill it out with lines and shapes to look like, in, like a beautiful pattern. In addition to that, we also get sketchbooks and get graded on two assignments. One of them is drawing our bedroom and the others picking a boat and choosing drawings based on the poem. All of these of, are my personal, all of these out of, all of these that I did are, out of that is the, is my personal favorite is the bowls. I always love doing things with clay and shaping it. Our class is my all-time favorite as I get to explore and try my hands on different genres. I'm so excited to learn the new things in art. Thank you for spending your valuable time listening to me.
Hello, my name is Crin Johan. And in health class, it teaches us stuff like how to find a, find out if like one of your friends has mental illness and how to prevent them from committing suicide. It also teaches us things like CPR. And it teaches us how to make correct decisions, like not doing drugs by teaching us with the effects that it has on us. It, I like this class because it's helping me out with making the right choices in life and teaching me what I do can go wrong in many ways and how I should be careful with the decisions I make. At the beginning of the year, it also taught us about self-love and how we should accept ourselves and our body, not, and how we shouldn't let the media affect who we are. Thank you.
We have one more clip that we'd like to show you from our fitness and conditioning class. That's in a, in addition to eighth grade physical education, that is an elective that our students can take. And that's what we have for you, Forest Park Middle School. I'm sure they're gonna want a photo, I'm just telling you. Of course I am. Alright, do you want us to gather? Which way do you want? Yep. To gather girls. I know you all have things to run to, so I'm so glad you're still here. Do you want?
Yes, please.
Yes, please, love. Did you want them to, no, no. Alright, here's a slide, everybody. Perfect, thank you. Any questions for myself or the, the young adults?
I just think this was the best half hour we've had in a long time. Oh, there's some gift bag, uh, some treat bags there for the Forest Park students to take.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
It's wonderful.
Yeah.
You guys were awesome!
That was very good. Okay, um. Now we'll move on to, um, seven C, our explanation of self-funding insurance.
Good luck!
Followed by even a better one. I've had the pleasure of, uh, doing these presentations to this board a few times and every time the room clears out just as I'm presenting. Um, so as Jim is pulling up, uh, my PowerPoint here, um, the purpose of today's presentation is just to do a high-level overview of the differences in funding mechanisms for the health plan. Um, so fully insured, which is what we are today, uh, where you pay a health insurance carrier premiums, they pay claims on your behalf, versus a self-funded arrangement where really the district becomes the insurance carrier and then we purchase other levels of protection to go, uh, to protect us against large claims and a large amount of claims. So, um, this is meant to just be high-level educational, talk about terms, the differences between two plans. Please, um, feel free to stop me and ask questions if you have, if you have any or if I'm going too fast, I do this for a living, so I tend to get on a roll here. Um, but the goal is to be done within twenty minutes or so, so, um. The agenda then for my presentation, and Jim will flip through this when he gets up, is just to, again, high-level overview, fully insured versus self-funded, how self-funding would impact the district, and then to answer, um, any questions you can make. And I'm on the third slide, Jim. They're so fast. Yeah, they're quick. Um, so, just to start, I wanna talk about some terminology that I'll be using and that we'll be using, um, in future meetings when we discuss the financial viability of self-funding. Uh, the first is stop-loss or reinsurance, they mean essentially the same thing. And there are two different types of stop-loss coverage that we would purchase if we moved to a self-funding arrangement. Um, the first is a specific policy, um, and what that means is there would be a deductible on every member of the district's health plan, so all of your employees, their spouses, and their dependents. And there would be an individual deductible for everybody, let's call it a hundred thousand dollars. So what that would mean is for every claim under one hundred thousand dollars, the district would be responsible to pay that claim. Any claim over one hundred dollar, one hundred thousand dollars, the reinsurance company would pay for it. So for example, if I'm on the district's health plan and I have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in medical claims over the course of our policy year, the district would pay the first one hundred thousand dollars and the reinsurance company would pay the fifty, the remaining fifty thousand dollars and anything over that. So that's a specific deductible. Then there's an aggregate deductible. Yes?
Can I, I just wanna stop, can, can I ask that this information be put in the board docs library for the board? So.
Yes.
We don't have to take too many notes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so an aggregate deductible is a deductible on the entire group for every claim under the specific deductible. So for example, if we have, I'm using rough numbers, they're not the district's exact numbers. Let's say we have ten million dollars worth of medical claims over the year and that's where our aggregate deductible is set. Once we hit ten million and one dollars, that aggregate policy would start to pay. Everything under that would be the district's responsibility. So, I point these two types of coverage out because we do still have some type of insurance product that we need to purchase to protect ourselves from any large claims or a large number of claims. But really, anything under those amounts, the district is responsible for paying those claims. What typically are, uh, the specific, uh, stop-loss amounts that you've seen other school districts use? So for a group of your size, I would say the average is probably anywhere between sixty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Seriously? Yeah, it really depends on, on the group's experience. How many employees are insured, Jim? Three hundred and eighty-ish. And what's, three hundred and eighty? Ish. See, for, for a size, a group of two fifty, we had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar stop-loss. How many claims in the past year went over a hundred thousand dollars? Uh, nine, I believe, and we've had fifty-six claims of over twenty-five thousand dollars. Over twenty-five thousand, but that's normal. Okay. So, when we, we're, we're out to the market right now, we are looking at all proposals. Um, we asked specific deductibles to range from seventy-five up to a hundred and now we've increased that up to a hundred and fifty to look at, um, competitive stop-loss proposals. So that's what we're looking at. Um, the contract period, um, I bring this up because it's, it's, it's important to understand the differences. So, when you look at those numbers on the, on the slot, on the slideshow, twelve eighteen, the first number is when the claim is incurred. So, it'd be the, for twelve-month contract. The second number then would be how long we have to pay the claim. So in the first example where it says twelve eighteen, that claim could be paid in eighteen months. So it's important to have run-out protection because if you go to the doctor on December thirty-first or in our case, June thirtieth, it generally takes about three months for that claim to work itself through the system. So if we had a twelve-twelve contract, that, that claim that happens right at the end of the policy year may not get paid. So we, we always want run-out protection. So the difference between the two numbers on the board, um, twelve eighteen would give us six months of run-out protection and a twelve-twenty-four would give us a full year of run-out protection. So, just the different types of contract periods and they have different pricing points, et cetera. But that's what those numbers generally mean. Um, lasers and laser liability, when you go self-funded, some stop-loss carriers will mitigate their risks by placing a laser on an individual. So, for example, if I was on the district's plan and I had a very serious medical condition that they knew was going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, they can place a laser on me as an individual and increase my specific deductible. So for example, if our specific deductible is a hundred thousand dollars and I, and, you know, they're worried about me having a half a million dollars in claims, they could place a specific deductible of just me of half a million dollars to mitigate their risks. Um, we have a couple options if that happens, one, we can take the laser and kind of roll the dice or if we don't want the laser, they'll then spread that risk out of, over the whole population. So there's a couple different ways. When I talk about, you know, lasers on individuals, I want it to be really clear that does not impact the employee. Their plan doesn't change, they don't have any different deductibles or out-of-pocket costs, it's just a financing mechanism for the district and the stop-loss carrier. So, it's not like the individual's being punished for, for having a medical condition, it's just a, a way to finance that, that liability. Um, holding a reserve, um, when I talk about reserves, the, the goal of going self-funding is to have more money in our bank account at the end of the year than gets paid out in fixed costs and claims. So if we do that, that money then goes into a bank account that we retain. So, once we do that enough times, hopefully that reserve account will continue to grow and that's what I mean when I say a reserve. And then we can use those dollars for very specific items throughout the health plan, so that's what a reserve means. Um, transplant carve-outs, um, this would be a fully insured product that we could purchase on top of our self-funded program that would pay for any transplants. Um, they're generally fairly low-cost and what happens is if we have a member that were to have a transplant, the district would not be liable for any of those claims and neither would the member. So all of their out-of-pocket costs attributed to that transplant procedure would be covered. Um, for a first-year case like we would be moving into self-funded, should we go that direction? I think they're a good idea if you have one transplant, these plans tend to pay for themselves. Um, and we will also get credit from the stop-loss carrier for having these types of plans. So they, 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 you tend to win out by offering them. But that'd be a decision we would have to make. Um, some, some acronyms here because this is job security for people like me to make three-letter acronyms for everything. Um, a TPA is a third-party administrator. Um, this would be the organization that we would partner with to help pay and adjudicate claims. So for example, United Healthcare or UMR, their parent company, Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Humana could be our TPA. And there's also some regional, local TPAs that we could work with. So we would pay a company, uh, some type of fixed cost dollars to help, um, run our health plan. They would help, you know, support our summary plan document, they would help pay claims, you'd have an ID card with their name on it. Um, so it would still feel like to the employees that we still are working with the health insurance carrier. A PBM is a pharmacy benefit manager. Um, so this would be a company that we would partner with to help administer our prescription drug program. Um, again, it can be through the major carriers or there are local, regional, um, pharmacy benefit managers that could help run the pharmacy benefit program. Um, network, we would rent then a network of doctors that, or providers that we could go to. Um, again, all of the major carriers have their own network and there are also local networks that we could partner with to, you know, help give us discounts and, and manage our, our provider network. IBNR stands for incurred but not reported. Um, again, because it takes about ninety days for a claim to work itself through the system, when we close out a plan year, we always have to be aware of claims that have been incurred but have not yet hit our system. So, the very first year, you go self-funding, self-funded, it tends to look really good because we're only gonna see about nine, maybe ten months of claims in that first year until the following year when everything kinda catches up. So, I just wanna be aware of that because the first month or two, um, we're not really gonna be seeing a ton of claims come through until they start to work themselves through the system. So that IBNR number becomes really important and it's just something to keep an eye on. Any questions just about the terms? Okay. Well, I'm pushing the button, it's not doing anything. Thanks, Jim. So now, just kind of comparing the two plans against each other, um, self-insured versus fully insured. Um, when you're self-insured, um, your fixed costs, what you pay in premiums decreases dramatically um, because your stop-loss insurance may be only ten percent of what you would pay as, as opposed to what we pay today for a fully insured plan. And then your, your fixed costs for, um, your TPA and your PB, PBM are generally really low. Um, so you have to add those costs and then the variable costs, um, which is your claims, which we, we can't predict through a month-to-month. So, those are the two different types of plans. When you go self-funded, you, you tend to pay a lot less in fixed costs and you're just riding out the roller coaster ride that is claims. When you're fully insured, we pay a pretty static month-to-month premium amount that goes to Humana today and then that money goes out the door, that's fine. Okay? Um, assumption of risk, when you're self-funded, really you as the employer are taking on the majority of the risk. And then when you're fully insured, the insurance company is assuming the risk. Uh, plan design, when you are self-funded, you have a lot more freedom, uh, in regards to plan design. You can do a lot more creative and flexible things that can, that you just can't do when you're fully insured. When you're fully insured, uh, we're limited to the plans that the insurance carrier offers us. Um, so advantages and disadvantages of self-funding. Um, the biggest thing I think with self-funding is the flexibility around the plan design, different things you can do with the network. You can, you know, do individual contracts with providers to get better discounts. Um, you know, some employers have, you know, carve-out policies for like orthopedic surgeries where they're sending their employees to centers of excellence to get better discounts. Uh, there, there's just a lot more that we can do to offer a better plan at hopefully a lower cost. Disadvantages on the flexibility side, um, employees may know that the employer can create plan design and ask for exceptions. It is extremely important that if we go self-funded, we follow the summary plan document to the letter of the plan. Um, do we have the ability to create exceptions? Yes, but then we lose our stop-loss coverage and that, you, you, you just can't do it. It opens us up to financial liability. And unfortunately, in the position that you all are in, if you hear an appeal for those things, we have to be extremely, extremely careful with that. When it comes to cash flow, self-funding can be a little bit trickier. One month we may pay out a million dollars in claims, the next month it may be two hundred thousand and it's, it's just more of a, of a roller coaster ride where when you're fully insured today, it, it doesn't fluctuate much at all depending on our, uh, senses. Uh, risk and liability, you know, we have to purchase stop-loss insurance. Again, that insurance, uh, though is generally much less expensive than what you'd pay a fully insured carrier. Um, and then the availability of information. Uh, we get a decent amount of reporting today when we're fully insured. However, when you go self-funding, we'll have act- However, when you go self-funding, we'll have access to much, much greater information. Um, obviously, you as the board, um, you wouldn't see it, um, but Valley in HR, um, she would have access to a lot of information where, I mean, we are now the insurance carrier, we have to be tracking, you know, who is having claims, are they in fact eligible, are they on our plan, you know, are their dependents eligible, all those things. Um, so we'll, we'll have access to detailed claim reports each month.
Who takes, who assumes the role of denying or accepting?
Your TPA.
TPA.
So, it's, it's not like Valley's saying yes, no, yes, no. Um, but when we do get a report, um, and claims dollars are coming out, we need to make sure that everyone on the plan should be on the plan.
And HIPAA still applies.
Yes, there are protections, um, we need to be very careful with, with all of those things. Um, advantages and disadvantages of being fully insured, uh, there's really no flexibility when it comes to plan design. Um, carriers may change their plan design upon renewal, you know, formularies change. Um, changing administrators isn't easy when you're fully insured, so those types of things are all, I would say, disadvantage. It isn't an ad, an advantage in my opinion to cash flow, it's nice to know what we're gonna pay every month, and that's it. If we pay, you know, X dollars and we have a really bad claims year, we're no worse off. If we have a really good year, all that money's out the door.
That's not true, though. You say you're no worse off, you just see a twenty percent increase in premiums for the next year, and then you have nothing you can do about it.
Sure. My, my only point is when you're self-funded, you see that twenty percent increase through the course of the year. It's when you pay it. Um, the risk and liability, again, the insurance carrier's assuming that risk. Um, in the good years, you know, the carriers, they're keeping those additional profits, and you, that, that, that money is out the door when you pay your premium. Um, availability of, a bit, easy for me to say, availability of information, um, the reporting is, is, is very minimal with what we get being fully insured.
The difference is the insurance company owns the data when it's fully insured, and the organization owns the data when it's self-insured pretty much, so you have much, much more data available to make your decisions in your plan design for preview for next year.
Okay, I want to talk about, um, reserves for a quick second. Um, this is a fund that we need to set aside for the employer and the employee contributions to pay claims or to fund future liability. There are very specific items that we can use to pay our, or to use our reserves. So, a couple, excuse me, a couple of examples are to offset any laser liability, um, to stabilize the plan in, in the event of a bad year. Pay run out claims if the district were to go back to fully insured. Um, I will say it's, it's generally pretty easy to get into self-funding. Um, to get out is much more difficult if we ever wanted to make that decision. So, this decision is not a year-to-year basis, if we're gonna go self-funded, it truly is a multi-year strategy because if you go from self-funded to fully insured, not only are you paying run out claims at the end of that self-funded plan year, but now you're gonna begin to pay fully insured premiums, so for the first three to six months of that second plan year, you're gonna be doubling up. So, if we're gonna go self-funded, it really is at least a five-year strategy. Um, the good news is if you do build up that reserve, I have employers that have, um, you know, a really sizable reserve. They've done things like premium holidays, where you tell the employees in the district, maybe we don't pay premium for the month of December. Um, they've done things for like wellness for people on the plan. So, you can use those dollars to help fund the health plan, so anyway on the health plan, you can use those dollars. However, if we have a really sizable reserve, that money is tied to the health plan, you can't pull it out to, you know, fund some other district initiative, it, it's, it's gotta be used for, um, for the health plan and the folks that are paying you that plan.
Question.
Yes.
If you were to, um, have a sizable reserve and, and then you're at the end of this, this five-year period and you wanna go back to, uh, fully insured, and it pays the run out claims, I know it's specifically tied to the health insurance, but would you be able to use any of that reserve money left toward future, offset future premiums? To pay, or, or sitting in the, in the budget now of the district, where would those funds get used?
Potentially, I would tell you if you went back to being fully insured, I'd wanna run that reserve all the way down to zero. Um, a way to do that would be to, you know, split the money and, you know, the, the district would keep their eighty-eight percent or whatever we pay for premiums, and then that twelve percent would go back to the employees that are on the health plan. Um, if you have a really sizable reserve, it's, you're probably not gonna be self-funded.
Why do you say a reserve can't be used for other things?
Uh, for example, you know, you wanted to build a new gym.
No, but, but, but if you're creating your own reserve for claims, why can't, you know, i- i- and then you have excess reserve at the end of the year. Uh, obviously, you're gonna wanna keep some reserve. But the other thing too is if you see your reserve is getting too large, you just don't fund it.
Right, so you, you'd offset.
So, you can use it for other things going on, because if you're not funding it.
Health plan.
No, no, but if you're not funding a reserve, who says, who's creating that reserve?
Well, it's, it's.
You're creating that reserve on your own balance sheet.
Correct. But so are the, but so are the employees.
Based on the performance of the.
And the employees are contributing to that plan, so it's not, it's not one hundred percent district money.
Gotcha. Well, okay, but then.
That's why it has to be tied to.
But the district doesn't have to fund the reserve at a set amount every month.
No.
So, then you can fluctuate how much you fund your reserve, therefore theoretically, you can use it for other things.
Yeah, you can adjust the amount of funding that goes into the reserve based upon the actuarial analysis of the plan. So, if you're really performing well, you could arguably redose, right, and reduce even the premium costs to the employees, thus bringing the reserve levels down.
And typically, isn't that reflected in the premium doesn't go up as much as it may have had to? So, it's not like you have cash that you can just take from there, you just.
My, my point is, if we had a reserve of six million dollars, and we really want that reserve to be around four million dollars, we can't just pull two million dollars out of that checking account, is what I'm, what I'm getting at. But you're, you're right, I mean, in future years, if our, you know, analysis is calling for an eight percent increase, and we have a, a, a large reserve built up, maybe we only take a four percent increase, and that four percent can be allocated. I think that answers, or what you were getting at. Okay, great, great questions. Um, so, a lot of this I've already talked about. When you do go self-funding, there are some additional administrative and cash flow bur, uh, burdens. Uh, you know, today, we, we pay an invoice monthly for our premiums. There would be weekly check runs and reporting that needs to be, um, analyzed, again, to make sure that the checks that are going out the door are supposed to be going out the door, and they're going to the right places, and they're covering our people. Um, there are fluctuations in cash going out to pay claims as they're owed. Um, we have to stay disciplined and, and build that reserve up to help, you know, again, handle those fluctuations. Um, there may be some additional employee education depending on what we do. Um, from a plan design standpoint, do we do some creative things along those lines? Uh, I have discrimination testing up here, honestly, it's not gonna be an issue for the district, you don't have a different plan for administrators or anybody else. Um, but we'd have to maintain that the health plan is the same for everybody on the health plan. Um, and then managing multiple vendors, right now, we have one vendor. Uh, if we went self-funded, you know, we could have up to four with a TPA, PBM, network, and, uh, stop loss carrier. Not that it's impossible, it's not, but there are just more relationships to manage. Um, you know, if we go, if we go self-funded, um, you know, we lose some of the, what I call value-added services. Uh, so for example, you know, the Go Three Sixty-Five Wellness Program. Not to say that we couldn't, you know, have a wellness program, or have Go Three Sixty-Five, or other things that other carriers would have, but as a self-funded entity, you are just funding all of those things. Um, more, more transparency, um, there's additional reporting, you're gonna get breakdowns of fixed costs versus claims. Um, you know, financial impact, I would tell you if you do self-funding right, it should save you about four to six percent off your premiums. Um, and that's gonna save, where I'm getting that money, that's gonna be insurance company profit. Your claims are still your claims, and we still have to pay our fixed costs and our insurance costs. Um, but we're removing that insurance company profit component from this because we're now taking on that responsibility as the carrier. So, there are generally some financial reasons to look at self-funding. And then flexibility, I think, is the big thing, we can really do some creative things to help manage our costs and manage our risks. So, um, again, that was very high level, it was just meant to be educational. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
So, you mentioned flexibility, well, what kind of things would you do differently that, you know, we're, I'm sure that's some of, some of that's happening already with our carrier. You mentioned the Go Three Sixty-Five as a program that they've, so what would we do that would be different than that?
So, one example is there's a company called Novo, they're based out of Appleton, they're, uh, part of the Orthopedic Sports Institute. All they do is, um, orthopedic surgeries, hips, knees, shoulders, ankles, those types of things. Because that's all they do, they're able to offer a bundled rate for those services. If you go to Aurora today, a knee replacement might be forty thousand dollars. Novo will do it for a flat fee of twenty-five thousand dollars, so you can save money on every service. So, that's just one example where we can do a direct contract with a certain provider, um, to, to, you know, mitigate those costs and create opportunities.
Somebody has to.
You can steer.
Go out there and get that contract.
Yeah, and, and there's other examples, it's, you know, Novo's the first one that comes to mind.
Three thousand dollar MRI versus a six hundred dollar MRI.
Smart choice MRI, yeah, yeah, those types of things. Um, prescription drugs, there is a, a lot of money in prescription drugs. You know, if we went with a, you know, like a Servu who's an independent pharmacy, we would start to collect rebate checks for our pharmacy usage. So, all the specialty medications that are used, we can get, you know, money back for the, for that usage. Those types of decisions, uh, it just opens up a lot of different flexibility for network steerage and Centers of Excellence and, and those types of things. Did that answer your question?
Well, I guess I would think insurance companies are doing the same thing, aren't they? I mean, they're establishing their networks to their advantage and partnering with the supplier.
Fully insured.
The issue with, the fully insured carriers is they have their own network contracts, so they're not gonna compete against them like with a Novo or with, uh, Access Health Net or some of these other things. And they're, you know, on the pharmacy side, they're keeping all of the pharmacy rebates that their members use. So, um, I mean, there's, they have to be competitive to offer a, a good network discount. Um, but it's just, when you're self-funded, you can take on more of that responsibility.
Who's identifying these relationships that we can take advantage of, is that something through, okay, through you guys?
And Valley has familiarity from her previous role.
Was your pre, was your previous district self-funded? How many school districts do you represent?
Uh, total, I believe our firm represents, I want to say anywhere from twelve to fifteen. We have two that are self-funded, DePere and Wyeway of Fremont.
Yeah, about twenty-five percent, I, I, I mean, I know this for a fact, twenty-five percent are self-funded in Wisconsin out of the four hundred and twenty-two.
Does it typically require a certain size, or?
No, it doesn't. The Kaiser Foundation, I was just looking at a study, that the Kaiser Foundation, uh, employers, now this is not school districts necessarily, but eighty-five percent of employers over two hundred employees are usually self-funded. We were self-funded for two hundred and fifty employees with a two hundred and fifty thousand stop loss. It depends on the reinsurance carriers, some laser, some don't. I don't know, things may have changed in the last couple of years, um, some laser, some don't. Um, but, once you go self-funded, you usually don't go back because you just have more control, um, about everything, the finances and everything. Cause otherwise, you just pay an insurance premium, and you don't really know what, where the money's going. So.
I have a question for Valley and Jim. With this additional work, would we, in HR or in the business department, would we have to hire extra HR employees and business employees?
Uh, I would say we're, we're at the point where we would need to do that, um.
Say, we would or we wouldn't?
Would, yeah.
Why so?
Uh, we're, we're kinda over the edge right now based on how the world has changed in the last five years, uh, and how our hiring has changed. We used to have, uh, a big hiring for the beginning of the year, and then things calmed down, and we didn't do much hiring all year long until June, May came along, we were hiring teachers again, and we'd run through, and then we'd have time for other things. And right now, um, really for the past five years, it never stops. And we're not able to do, uh, things as well as we want, we aren't able to do as we want. So, we're kind of stretched right now, and adding this, uh, I would say we would need to add someone, um, to do this and, and help with some other things. But I think the, from what other districts have seen for, uh, savings, uh, that would only be a small piece of, of what we would save.
Are we likely to have to add somebody anyway then in the next couple of years based on?
It's, it's possible, yeah.
Does, does Horton have his own legal staff?
We have an attorney, um, but we don't have.
Helps with compliance issues?
Um, yes, I'm an attorney, and then we also.
No, but you don't have someone dedicated to compliance?
We do in our own park office, yes. And then we also work with outside firms, does that help with the risk of compliance, federal compliance?
Yeah, cause we gotta do something about the cost of our plan. So, we're one of the most expensive plans in the state right now. We're in the top fifteen percent as far as what it costs us to run our plan.
Is it because of the level of benefits we're providing, or?
Not necessarily, no, because, I mean, I mean, most plans from, I, I had data from not last year, but from seventeen eighteen. And the data that I was looking at showed that our plan was forty-third most expensive. Um, where was my notes here? For the single premium, it was forty-third out of three hundred and fourteen fully insured plans. And for the family premium, it was forty-eighth out of three hundred and fourteen plans. Um, there's three hundred and fourteen fully insured and a hundred and eight self-insured. And, um, are our benefits, I mean, the benefits, it, it did have detailed information on benefits for most districts, and I'll say they're somewhat comparable, you know, a lot of PPOs, which is what ours is. Um, the other thing that I noticed on ours, um, we not only were more, one of the more expensive plans, but our out-of-pocket maximums were five thousand and ten thousand for single and family, which was higher. Again, ranked fifty-fourth out of three hundred and fourteen. So, we're paying more, and our out-of-pocket max for the employees is higher.
But we're not here to discuss that today, I mean, the agenda item is self-funding, so.
But that information is all out on the Department of Administration website.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item seven D is our Community Pride Survey update, Mr. Cohen and Dr. Miller.
Okay, um, I'll just queue up Mr. Cohen by just kind of reminding the board, um, what this is. And, um, our Community Pride Survey is a result of a goal within our coherence plan. So, we strive to be a better place to learn, a better place to work, and part of a better community. So, when we got the group together to design the goals to support that, um, there was a group of people, actually the entire team, that agreed that, um, we wanted to make sure that people felt proud of our school district. So, we've established some goals around that, and, um, one of those goals is to increase pride. And in order to do that, we need to measure it. So, um, we did conduct a survey last year, it was, um, more of a paper survey than anything, and it had just four questions. There were only a hundred and twenty-five people who responded to this survey, but the data was good. Um, it, it, we received information that eighty-four percent agree or strongly agree that they're proud of our school district. But we weren't satisfied with that low number of respondents. So, we've done a, we've done a much better job of creating a survey, and Mr. Cohen's gonna tell you about that survey and the results.
Yep, good evening. Uh, in front of you, there should be a two-sided sheet of paper in color that will kind of highlight some of the information from the Pride Survey. Um, the, the first thing I would say, just to echo Dr. Miller's comments, Qualtrics, we referenced last time during the assessment report last month. Um, we've already seen some benefits of utilizing that system within our surveys. Um, though there was a paper version of this survey last year, I will say that it was open for several months, and there was also an electronic version. And we sent it via the same methods or, or similar. And we sent it via the same methods or similar methods that we sent this survey this year. And despite it being open for several months and using electronic and paper sources, we only had a hundred and twenty-five respondents. This survey was open for one month, from September twenty-seventh to October twenty-seventh. We had well over that hundred and twenty-five respondents within the first eight hours of the survey and we had nine hundred and two total respondents. So nine times roughly the number of respondents that we had a year ago. And so we're seeing those similar returns across multiple survey systems or types of surveys within Qualtrics that we're using. And so it's benefiting us in terms of the data that we're collecting. It was a very short survey. One of the reasons I think that we're seeing an uptick in responses is because Qualtrics is fairly mobile friendly. And in the past, when we utilized something like Survey Monkey or Google Form, if you were to open that email with that link, it's not very mobile friendly on your phone and some people might have set that aside. This system's very mobile friendly and so we're seeing more immediate responses to the survey that we're sending out. It was very short. There was just a few questions that were asked. And the first being, generally speaking, are you proud of the Franklin Public School District? I will say that we sent this via school messenger, so certainly it went to all of our parents. But we also, in the community newsletter, city newsletter, provided a paper version with a QR code that they could sync into as well as send back a paper version of the survey. So the survey did go to some non-Franklin Public School parents because they were parents of the Oak Creek Franklin Public School District. And it also went to non-parents right through that city newsletter. So we got kind of a well-rounded response rate across those various groups. What you're going to see is sixty percent of respondents said that they strongly agree with the statement that generally speaking, I'm proud of the Franklin Public Schools. And we had an eighty-nine percent rate in the top two boxes, so somewhat or strongly agree. You're going to notice that this is on a five-point scale. So from strongly agree down to strongly disagree, with a three being neither agree nor disagree. So there was a neutral in that response. With only six percent of respondents saying that they strongly agree or somewhat disagree. To the right of that pie chart, you're going to see the overall mean score. And so as people rated within, we had a four-point-four average score to that statement or that question about, do you feel proud of the Franklin Public School District? So given the number of respondents, those are very high scores, right? And exceeded certainly the scores we had a year ago. And so we're starting off from a great place in terms of the community's sense of pride. That said, we did ask a few other more specific things. So as you move down to the bottom half of the document, we were interested in what we saw as some core components of pride, right? And as we defined pride through the process of the coherence plan, these were some things we targeted. And so we looked at and asked parents to rate us on a scale related to providing an excellent education, community education and recreation programming that meets the needs of the community, well-kept facilities, and proactive communication. And what you're going to see below that is the average score then based on each of those individual statements. And you'll see that they're all fairly static, right? But they're all above four. So they're ranging from a four-point-two to a four-point-five. So again, high scores, right? People seem satisfied and agree that these things are happening within our district. To the right of that, one of the features, tools that are within the Qualtrics system is it allows us to fairly easily do some statistical analysis. And one of the statistical analysis tools is called the key driver tool. And what that does is it looks at those four statements and it says, all right, so based on how people responded to these four statements, how much did it influence their response to the overall pride question? So in other words, maybe I think the facilities are well-kept, but it didn't influence how I responded to the pride question, right? So we're looking for those statements that are actually drivers of how I responded to pride. And so what you're seeing here are four quadrants and it's kind of zoomed in. Anything gold in that upper right quadrant was deemed to be significant or tied to my response around pride, right? And what it told us was the most significant factor, and I think we could have predicted this ahead of time, was the response to Franklin Public Schools provides an excellent education was the most influential factor over how I determined whether or not I feel pride in the school district. And as we moved to some of those other factors, they had less influence over that overall score. So this is something interesting for us to take a look at as we think about what does pride really mean and what drives somebody to respond that they feel pride in the school district. You can see how those kind of fit on that chart. On the backside, we have two other additional pieces of information. Because we had a couple of different key demographics that responded to the survey, we wanted to see if there was any significant difference in their responses. And so what you're seeing are the four statements again, each with their own set of bar graphs. And what we did was disaggregate by the overall score, just parents. So anyone who responded to the survey as a parent, anyone who responded to the survey as a staff member, and anyone who responded to the survey as a resident. And so you can see how those scores kind of broke down across the four statement areas. And what we saw was there wasn't any significant difference across those groups. And I would say that these groups were fairly evenly represented across the metrics.
They were even, even?
Fairly even.
Same number?
Yeah, roughly the same number, yeah. And despite that, we saw roughly the same score. So no significant difference kind of between these groups. The last area I wanted to highlight for you is kind of below that midpoint line. And this is something that we've started to learn more about and utilize a little bit more over the course of the year. Fairly common in the business world is something called a net promoter score. So anytime you've been part of a survey where you've been asked how likely you would be to recommend something to someone else, that metric, that tool, that question, goes into something that the business calls, that utilizes it called a net promoter score. What it means is if you were to kind of generally ask the community of respondents whether or not they would be actively promoting the school district, whether or not they're kind of neutral to the school district or whether or not they're actively saying negative things about the district, this is a tool to help us determine that. And so what you do here is we basically asked families, how likely would you be to recommend FPS to someone new to the community? So if someone was moving in, how likely would you be to say, yeah, I fully recommend the school district? In the world of net promoter, that's the only information they have other than a scale from zero to ten. So they're rating us on that scale from zero to ten. Behind the scenes though, the science of net promoter score, a nine or ten are considered promoters. In other words, they're enthusiastic enough about the district that they're likely saying good things on a regular basis about us. Sevens and eights are considered passive. So they may feel fairly good about the school district, but they're not necessarily actively promoting the school district. And then a zero to six is considered a detractor. So someone who's kind of actively saying negative things about the district when asked that question. And so in the bar graph below that, you're seeing the breakdown of respondents of those nine hundred and two. Fifty-four percent of respondents fell into that promoter range of nine, ten. Thirty-one percent fell into the passive range of seven, eight. And about fifteen percent fell into that detractor range of zero to six. And those numbers compare pretty favorably or evenly to the overall response to, do I feel pride in the district, right? That was eighty-nine percent strongly agree. This is about eighty-five percent in those top two boxes. So fairly similar. The way you calculate a net promoter score then is you take that overall percentage of promoters, you subtract the overall percentage of detractors and that gives you a score. And then that score is on a scale from negative one hundred to positive one hundred. In the business world, what's considered good kind of varies. Anything positive is a good score. Once you start to get above fifty, you start to get into the target area for most businesses. And so that's how, you know, the business world starts to think about that concept of net promoter. It's something we've utilized in a couple of different areas and certainly something that we track and keep an eye on. And something we've learned more about and thought was interesting as we were doing the work. So those were the overall results of the survey. Yes, ma'am?
So the detractors defined as zero to six, is that like based on science or who decides with these boxes?
Yeah, it's based on the tool, right? That the research-based tool that's been utilized in businesses. So that's the range based on kind of the research and application of this tool. That's where the breakdown starts to occur. I will tell you that there were a couple of opportunities for families to share comments as a part of this, but we had well north of a thousand comments. And so you think about how to organize those into themes. Certainly, we've been spending some time as teams and looking at that information and thinking about how we might utilize some of those comments because they're kind of all over the place. And so it's important that we find some focused themes there. What I will say is when you start to break down the comments by detractor, passive, and promoter, you start to see that there's some clear lines in terms of the themes that are starting to come out of some of those comments. And so, you know, you can kind of see those cutoff points align with the way the numbers are set. But certainly we've got much more work to do to kind of break those down and look at them more closely.
So what did you think of those breakdowns, Linda? Do you think these are kind of spot on or?
It seems like it's, you know, why detractors, why does six say I'm starting to detract? Maybe I'm more in the middle. Maybe it's passive, could be bigger.
That's funny you bring that up because I was thinking a promoter could be an eight, nine, or ten and a passive would be seven, or yeah, seven, six, and then detractors maybe. I just wonder how that would shift the-
Yeah, the other thing that's interesting about it is I look at these types of surveys completely different now, right? If I'm asked a question, a net promoter question, immediately I think about whether I'd give it a nine or ten or seven or eight just because I know kind of how this sits now, right? So it's interesting to think about. But that's the scale that's standard across the world of business.
I'm just kind of curious, so when I think about our schools and, you know, pride and all that, I mean, our sports teams generate, we win stuff, doesn't that generate some pride and community engagement also? When you go out to the football field and you're rallying around your sports team?
I'm sure there are a number-
You have excitement in here.
Yeah, I'm sure there are a number of other factors we didn't consider, right? These are just the ones we chose to kind of start with. Certainly, there are a lot of things that I think drive pride, right?
So what are the next steps? And is this going to be every year and at the same time of year? Because I think September, October could have, you could have a different view as a parent in September, October than you do mid-year or end of the year.
So we've been really careful to start to think about the coherence plan a little differently in terms of these bigger measurements. In the past, we've had a strong desire to kind of measure beginning of year, end of year. And those times of year, we feel have had some influence over how people have responded, especially things like student engagement, for example. And so we're starting to shift a little bit to these more annual surveys. So this survey will be administered annually, same month, end of September through the end of October, just so we can have some consistency in the data. In terms of next steps for us, we've set a baseline. And so we're continuing to do some work, not only in analysis of this data, but thinking about how might we influence this data in a positive way. And then throughout the rest of this year, we'll continue to implement some strategies we think may have an impact here. We'll re-administer the survey and see if we're making headway on some of those pieces.
Can you do some of those other testings at the beginning of the year and then the middle of the year and at the end of the year that we've had when we do the walk around the room? To kind of see how the numbers change throughout the year? Because when you go year over year, you're dealing with a whole separate group of people usually. I'm wondering if that'd be any benefit here to do this more than once a year to see how those attitudes change during the year than at least you're capturing the same population?
Yeah, we always have to kind of weigh like survey fatigue as well in that conversation, right? We don't want people to think we're not being actionable with the data. And if we administer it too much, then oh, this is the same survey I just filled out a couple of months ago. So we try to consider that alongside it with surveys like this. Something like academics, for example, certainly we're measuring that all the time. Things like student engagement, we're measuring that all the time. So those can happen a little more frequently and not run that risk.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is seven E, our building and grounds annual report. Mr. Stumball and Mr. Milzer. Welcome.
Thank you for having me tonight. We'll get started. So building grounds department, that we clean and maintain over nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet of building and approximately two hundred and twenty-eight acres of land. The department consists of forty-three full-time RFT employees spread across eighteen hours a day, seven days a week. Mr. Cohen had just mentioned, we recently had a community pride survey. And because of those forty-three hard-working custodians, the community indicated that we believe, that they believe our facilities are well-kept by giving that area the highest score out of the four components of the pride survey. Under the executive summary in the board, in the report, you will see some of the factors that go into deciding on what projects will be completed next year and over the next few years. Such as health and safety concerns, condition of our equipment, and the community needs. The district is approaching a time period where there are many roof sections and HVAC systems that are aging out or reaching their life expectancies. This is due to the fact that in the nineteen nineties, there were three new buildings constructed while four other buildings received substantial additions. The relatively close proximity of all these referendum-funded work has created a situation where the replacement of these systems will now be a priority. So what you will see in the report for 2020 to 2024 projects listed is the district focusing pretty heavily on roofs and HVAC replacements. Simply, we have items that are showing signs of age and parts are no longer becoming available. And we are trying to even out the number of other roof sections and HVAC units that are all coming due so that in the future, we don't run into this group, you know, the amount of work that needs to be done in a short period of time here. As an example, like compiling roof data from each school, we were able to ascertain that within the next five years, we can anticipate needing to replace thirty-five percent of all our building roofs. So if you look at your roofing chart and report here, you will see year six through twenty, that fourteen-year span, we have thirty-nine percent of our roofs coming due. So the plan that you will see in this report starts getting the district caught up on our roofing and HVAC replacement over time while spreading out the cost and square footage for future replacement needs and future cycle replacements. So that's kind of just the report here. And with that being said, I'd also like you guys to know that the building grounds department is concerned more about more than just resource management. It is about providing clean and safe environments for our community. It is also about creating a physical setting that is appropriate and adequate for learning.
Well, I want to say first of all, it was very exciting to see that we have a multi-year plan in front of us, which is a first.
Well, it's not a first.
It's not a first.
It's been a while. I mean, it was just laid out wonderfully.
Very nice.
Very wonderfully.
I could debate that, but I'm not going to. I shared with Jim what I thought would have been a better matrix format to allow you to see a little bit more clearly what, where the focus is. And you've seen my email to Jim, so I'm not going to debate that here. As far as the chalkboards to whiteboards, are we there yet or is there a goal or does it matter? It's on your list, so.
That's something that I personally would like to see and I know a lot of the staff would, teaching staff would like to get whiteboards. So that is something that we-
So some schools have them, some don't? That's, I'm guessing?
Right now, Ben Franklin and Robin Wood still have chalkboards.
Okay. The LED lighting, you have, I believe, five years identified, or five schools identified for LED lighting conversion? That's usually a very quick payback in like three to five years. Why are we, are we expecting to address that maybe quicker?
That is something as an additional project that we can look into. To be honest, at this point, I do not know what the payback will be. Five months into the job, so.
Okay, so we look at that.
So getting that building ready across the street took up a lot of first couple of months of my role here.
And as far as our pavement, we have a lot of pavement that we're also looking at, right? Do you have a plan or an assessment of that condition and what the needs are long-term?
Yes, I actually, I walk the pavement every year with our, the last two years, kind of as my assistant role here, before I took over with our paving, kind of consultant here. And as you'll see, Pleasant View is the only one in the next couple of years that will need to be redone.
Didn't we already do some kind of pavement project there a couple of years back?
Not to my knowledge.
Pleasant View?
Southwood and Ben Franklin over the last couple of years.
The playground area on the, that whole area is done?
We redid the playground at Pleasant View. That might be what you're thinking of.
Yeah, it's pavement.
And to also answer your question annually, we spent about twenty-five thousand on repairs and maintenance, line striping, heat, infrared patching, and tiring across the district.
And are heating systems then are all where we want to be? I know you've got HVAC, you know, the units, but there's also other heating systems that are part of that. Is that where you want to be?
That's part of this whole HVAC system, so.
Or does it just relate to rooftop units, all right?
That's including rooftop units and some of the other unit vents and that would be considered part of the HVAC system.
And then Fund Forty-Six, you said you would have that information or you're in other plans for that?
Right, right. Because we have that, all those projects-
Because we have that, all those projects identified for this year, we'll have that at the end of the year. And where we came out, we included the project at the high school because we thought you'd want to know about it, and it was completed during the summer. We wanted to list it as a project, even though it wasn't really coming out of that budget. But it was a large project that was done. And Fund Forty-Six, if you remember, wasn't entirely about new big things we were going to do. It was also some of these things that have been on the list for a long time and maintenance items. So it's always a fund we can lean on if we say, well, you know, as we get three, four years into this plan, if those rooftop units are going faster than we thought, we can pick up some of that in Fund Forty-Six and kind of catch up that way.
Because at this point, you're, you identified two hundred and sixty-one thousand square feet of roofs in the next five years, but you're only playing for one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, so some of that will be washed.
That's part of trying to stretch it out.
Right.
So that they're not all at the same point, because those roofs can generally be patched to get them to go a few more years. If we have one that absolutely fails, then we'll do it immediately.
Right. Are you, are you done? Just one more question. So air conditioning, we still have one more air conditioning project in here? Otherwise, are all our facilities open?
For the most part, except for the lower shop area of the high school.
That's the last area?
Wood shop, metal shop, and the autos area.
Or fully air conditioned? All right, time for all your run of school.
So you throw that in there.
I just want to say that first of all, with Forest Park Middle School, our custodial staff was amazing in setting that up and then watching them unpack and set up all that furniture and it, and then just the care they took. I saw them polishing doorknobs and everything they did, that I congratulate them and you for what, and Mr. Cludier for what they did. It was very impressive. And I, you know, I see in the report that we contract out for plumbers and pitch back and things like that. But does, out of curiosity, do any of our custodial staff have licenses for plumbing and things like that? No? Okay, I was just curious.
So, I mean, we do handle some of the typical basic plumbing, electrical stuff, but those bigger projects, we do contract out.
And the reason it's contracted out first, I mean, I'm sure you, I would hope you would take a look at your annual budget and what you pay to contractors? And would it be worth it for us to hire a full-time electrician or a full-time plumber? Or is it the expertise or the size of the job, whether it's multiple individuals needed? I mean, I know there's a lot of variables.
That's what we've found over the years, is that we just don't have enough of it to keep somebody going full-time and to pay that extra money for them to be there all the time. Because then they end up doing something else that we shouldn't be paying them that money for.
Right.
So we keep an eye on it, but we're not at that point where it makes sense.
Yep.
The report is excellent, so thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven F, the review and discussion of our W A S B resolutions. And Mr. Gamble is our delegate this year, and Mr. Sprague is our alternate. And if we open up the resolutions, if there are any that either our directors or board members want to point out for discussion, we can do that rather than go through each of them, there aren't that many this year. But I do want to point out that, well, first of all, does anyone have any they want to discuss? Mr. Milzer, did you have any, or Ms. Coe, anything?
No, I would say we're generally in favor of additional aid.
Yeah.
Especially where it's pointed out that it's, they're asking for new monies rather than just taking money away from one area and giving it to another. There are some areas in here that we wouldn't benefit from as much as other districts, where we don't have as high a population of free and reduced or E L students. But in the big scheme of things, I think we can acknowledge that there is extra money to be spent there, so it does make sense.
But, and that's even the case with our resolution, because we're asking for support from other districts.
Right.
So, which is the one I wanted to bring up. Our resolution, which is Resolution Twenty-O-seven, we're going to be asking for an amendment to that resolution. And Mr. Cohen, I don't know if you wanted to speak to the amendment, which Mr. Gamble will be bringing up as a delegate, so.
Yeah, so we've continued to make progress with Senator Craig's office, which has been great. I spoke with them in December again, as they moved towards some draft legislative language. But as we've had that ongoing conversation, there's been some needs to just make some adjustments to the potential legislative languages based on terminology and some things that we want to shore up. And one of the suggestions I recommended was that instead of limiting it to fifty percent or more of students within sixty days or less, that we just cover ourselves by extending that to full academic year. So in other words, that the language would read something along the lines of, if at least fifty percent of the pupils attending the school are not enrolled for the entire academic year, rather than saying sixty days or less. The rationale for that is, I have some concern about the way D P I is going to pull and extract that data. They pull a third Friday count number, which determines enrollment for the H O C. And because our population is so transient, that number in September isn't necessarily reflective of the population of students in terms of how long they're with us. And so the way we get around some of that is just by saying, if they're not with us for the full academic year, then we would qualify under that statute. And so as we've done that work, the committee has had conversation about making some potential adjustments to the resolution with W A S B to make sure we're reflecting the language in any potential legislation that would be coming forward in the near future. So the two proposed changes within the resolution language, one is to change that from sixty days or less to full academic year. And the other is just to clarify the type of facility that we're talking about. D P I has multiple classifications for everything from type-one prison to juvenile correctional facility to a number of other kind of names. Most of those school districts within those prisons are operated by the House of Corrections or the Department of Corrections or the state, whereas juvenile detention facilities and jails are the ones that impact the state report cards. So in the original resolution, I think the W A S B committee called it youth correctional facility. We're going to ask them to adjust that to say juvenile detention facility, because that language is more in line with what statute currently requires in terms of the impact in the state report card. So those are the two potential changes that Mr. Gamble would be bringing forward to the committee.
Thank you.
Are you going to be introducing the motion up in front as the district bringing the motion to the committee? Or is there someone, a committee member that's doing that?
No, when I was there last year, the different districts that wanted to amend or advance their amends, resolutions, had microphone time, and so I would use that opportunity.
So someone from the committee will bring it to the floor up in front, and then you'll go to the microphone and make the amendment changes? Front on the body?
Probably have to actually go up there when they're asking an open call for amendments to the resolutions as published.
There's a procedure he has to do, he has to fill out a form ahead of time.
Right.
And then, as he said, he does that.
What I mean is, on the, in the front right, they have the people from the committee, and I wasn't sure if it was also representatives from the boards that put these resolutions together. They walk up to the front to bring the motion to the floor, and then it's open for discussion. I don't know if that was going to be what you were going to do as part of that, or if that's somebody from the committee that brings it to the floor, and then you're just going to be sitting out there, as I have done, and then go to the microphone and submit your amendment.
I'll find out for sure on Tuesday prior to the convention when they have a meeting to, to bring up this exact same thing. Is if you have an amendment you want, a resolution you want amended, here's the process, here's what you have to do. And it also gives you a trial run to talk about it.
That's the night before, right?
Tuesday before, yeah.
Tuesday, yeah. And then one other thing I wanted to ask if I made, so I almost see this running in two different tracks. I mean, you were able to meet with Dave Craig and get this thing really rolling on the legislative side. And what this really is, is kind of a cheerleading session with the W A S B to say, here's what I want our lobbyists to talk to the legislatures about, but we're already working past that, so you're actually working on legislative language that might even be ahead of where we are in this process. Which is great, but we still want it to align, is what you're saying.
Right, yeah, we just don't want it to deviate. So the more we can align it now, the better. I mean, the legislative language may continue to change, and that, that's okay, as long as the spirit of the resolution is aligned. But as long as we have this opportunity to align the language, we thought it might be beneficial to do that. I would also point out, Representative Skoronsky, his office contacted Senator Craig, and he's also enthusiastic about helping support on the Assembly side. So we're kind of working from both sides of the legislature right now.
Did any other board member or director have a resolution they wanted to talk about?
I don't, I'm, I'm not a big fan of ten. Native American mascots, this whole thing has just completely been ridiculous to me. I don't think it's that big of a deal. And I think even the people that are trying to make it that big of a deal, make it a bigger deal than what it is. That's just me, I don't, I mean, you're going to find that ninety-five percent of the people in the room are going to probably agree with most of the stuff that's in here. But for me, that's, that's not, that doesn't move the needle for me at all, so. I don't know what the rest of the board feels like as far as directing Larry or suggesting to him what, how he should vote, but for me, that's not a big deal. Making these districts change their mascot name, I don't know. That's what I mean. It's like, really, so, anybody else have, I mean, ten, is that?
I didn't appreciate this, providing state funding for it.
Well, everything's in here with a handout, I mean, that's, that's where we are. So, and the meal shaming thing, that's another thing that I was looking at. I don't, I don't, I don't think, no one's trying to shame a kid who's, who can't get a meal. I mean, what would you rather have them do, not feed them, as opposed to feed them something that's? So again, I just, I think this, this is something that kind of got blown out of proportion throughout the last year. And so for me, those are the two that I wasn't real crazy about supporting, but. Anybody else know?
Item thirteen on mandatory reporting, do you think training's adequate? Do we have to beef up training for mandatory reporting?
Yeah, I don't know what that training would actually entail, because right now, we follow-
Right, there is training, right.
Right. I mean, we just obviously want to make sure that we're protecting students and we're working with the agencies, you know, on behalf of families and that we understand what our role is and kind of where the boundaries are with that as well, so.
And staff are comfortable in knowing when to report?
I, yeah.
You think so? Okay. I'm also interested in what you think about the dyslexia guidebook and the need for that.
I think that will be very beneficial, it's kind of a hot topic right now. I mean, dyslexia has kind of just been a little more ambiguous as far as like an area of identification. I mean, really, we look at specific learning disabilities, and dyslexia falls within that. But we haven't had extensive training and really specific, like I said, methods of identification within the school setting and people with that level of expertise to support students with that. So I think that will be welcome clarification for all of us, so.
I guess my question would be, don't you feel that dyslexia is really part of a learning disability as a, do we need this kind of?
Yeah, I mean, it falls under that umbrella. But again, it's not an area that we're super clear right now on strategies and identification of it. We don't have a universal screener for that. It kind of falls within other areas. So it's just, it's kind of surprising that it's, it just falls in this gray area oftentimes. Like, very rarely is a student identified within a school setting with dyslexia being the most specific root cause, so.
Is there a reason for that? Is it because we don't really recognize it as?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I think there have just been questions over time about, again, where does it fall? Is it a language issue? Is it a reading issue? Vision, some people, I mean, it's just, has not been very clear. So it's kind of been a, not neglected area, but, like I said, our methods are not well-defined. So we need to improve in that area.
Okay, appreciate your comments. We could talk later.
Sure.
Okay, so I guess Larry, you're all set, you know, you're on your own. How it usually is. So, thank you for representing the board. So now we'll move on to item eight, school board liaison reports. Do we have any board liaison reports?
I did attend the S W S A meeting on Thursday morning, and they did have the state superintendent speaking, Carolyn Stanford Taylor. And she did provide what their, what her focus is as a state superintendent. Five areas, safe schools, supportive adults, family and community engagement, effective instruction, and then also instructional leadership. There also was some discussion about, you know, the state budget that passed, and that was a success. And well, how can we keep that rolling in the next, next budget? And some of the, and this group talks about, you know, messaging and what should the message be and why was it successful? And one question or one story that you have to be able to tell is legislators want to know, you know, we gave you more money, what did you do with it? So that's the question that has to be told. So Jim, if you can figure that out, you know, we know what the story is. I understand that really it was, the success is related to getting more special, special ed money. But special ed money, though, is because we already fund special ed with our general ed money, and people are not, that story is not easily understood by the public.
Right.
So you need to, we need to figure out how to connect those dots. Even the group at difficulty talking about what really happened with special ed. I think business managers were saying what, what that meant, but I don't think board members or maybe superintendents in clearly. But that is what they're looking at in preparing for the next state budget. You know, how you tell your story, and also equity is also an area that's talked about. Some of the voices that you hear in that group, because it's a range of, I mean, it's, it's our whole southeast area. And as the director suggests, it really is a statewide view of districts and small, different sizes. They have different mixes of students and needs, so. So, yes, some of the voices that you hear, like coming out of, along equity, I think it's not Whitefish Bay, but Brown Deer. Because they have a very different population, and really, I think it's, she tried to voice some of the same things that we have talked about in our equity discussions. You know, students come, they're not all equal, they come with their stories, and you have to, how do we? And even the superintendent said, how do we think about systematic changes to really help these students? Because closing the gap is, as she said, it should be a crisis. We've been talking about the gap for ten years and has not changed. It's time to really figure this out. So, and also, I think that there was somebody from Racine also that talked about that need in the areas of, you know, what do we have to teach to really make these kids successful? So that was some of the ideas that were discussed, so.
What was Stanford Taylor's view on the budget? Did she?
Well, they were happy with it.
She was happy with it, okay.
You not be, you, she also, also interesting that she, as a new, you know, superintendent, she's filling out a term. But they said that nationwide, you know, Evers, when he was in that position, he was there over, what, over fifteen years? Which is just unheard of nationally, that kind of consistent leadership in that role, which is a plus. Most of the time, they don't last more than three years in other states, so.
I thought Burmeister was there for a long time too, though, prior to him.
In our state?
Yeah.
I'm saying across the, the nation. I'm saying across the, the nation, it's very unusual to have consistent leadership at the top for a state. But at the same time, we like our local control, so you got that kind of tension going on.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports?
I had a meeting at the end of last month with the Franklin Educational Foundation. It was nice, there was quite a, all the principals and the winners of the teacher of the year at each school were there for pictures. Dr. Mueller was there to present them with awards, and also Sherry Hanneman is resigning, or has resigned, at effective first of the year, as the director of that, of the foundation, and a lot of the board members are also done with their terms. So they're going through a fair amount of change, and, but I, I think they've, I think they're finding a way forward as well. At least that's, that's what was discussed at the meeting. Also met with Mr. Cohen today. We talked about the Community Pride Survey largely.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Next, eight B, our school and community engagement visits. Anyone?
Well, community engagement, on December nineteenth, I attended on behalf of Volition Franklin, well, I volunteered at the Truth About Adolescent Drinking event that was held at Ascension Southeast Wisconsin Hospital. And it was a good event. It had three Ascension doctors speak about adolescent drinking and how it's affecting adolescents in Franklin. Unfortunately, only one parent showed up to the event, but I, I thought personally it was a bad time to have it, because it was in December and everyone's so busy, but the group thought it was good because it was before the holidays, so, so it was mostly volunteers there. But the discussion was very good, and the open discussion ended up being about, a lot about how a lot of parents are drinking at sporting events and things like that in front of their kids, and, you know, a lot of, I don't want to say, not Little League, but a lot of events like that, where, where you can buy alcohol at some of the places and drinking in front of their children, things like that. And it's a bad example and things like that, but, and then the doctors also spoke about, you know, how alcohol's affecting the brain, which we see at, at our events that Mr. Hines speaks at, you know, events like that. And it was a good event. Hopefully, they'll do it again at another time of year when parents might come, because it was unfortunate, but a good event. So, anyone else? I know it was a busy time of year. Otherwise, I, we'll move on to item nine. I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen-point-eight-five, sub-one, sub-C, for the district administrator's self-evaluation and review of administrator performance, and pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen-point-eight-five, sub-one, sub-G, to discuss possible litigation strategy, and pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes one-eighteen, point-two-four, sub-seven, and nineteen-point-eight-five, sub-one, sub-C, and F, to discuss preliminary non-renewal notices. Do I hear that motion?
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Gamble?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
And Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. We are in closed session at seven fifty-four.